Please be turned the volume down.
You don't need that, boss.
Then we'll tease you.
Excuse me, boss.
Yeah, that's right.
Actually, what's great, I probably should just call you. I love that when that happens.
There's some other funny ones. I'm thinking about it.
Did you fix it?
Uh, yes, because I brought that. I was just getting the serial number, which I gotta get off of here.
Off of mine?
Yeah, just for inventory.
Is that like, somebody told me in order to get on something, they have to have an ID and sign up?
I actually have it with me.
Yeah, there's some space on there where they go, if it's open and transparent, how come I have to sign up?
Yeah.
Okay, folks, if I can get folks to take their seat, we're gonna get started here in just a second.
I didn't, I didn't match it by name.
Alrighty, folks, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the city council study session. Our only agenda item for this meeting is the accessory dwelling unit discussion. Community development staff are present here to present details of the Inglewood Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation for regulating new accessory dwelling units and answer city council questions regarding the recommendation, recommended ADU regulatory amendments. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is John Voberell, Planner 2, and I'm here tonight to give you a rundown of some of the details of the accessory dwelling unit recommendation and also to tell you, give you a little show and tell about our accessory dwelling units open house meeting that took place on June 13th. As you can see in the PowerPoint and my prop that I brought, that our theme for the accessory dwelling units open house meeting was back to the future. The heydays of accessory dwelling units ended in the 1950s, but now they are making a comeback today. Okay, so we, our format for our open house meeting was, we didn't want to give a presentation and we wanted to make the hours as flexible as possible so that people didn't have scheduling conflicts, so we held the meeting from 5:30 to 8:30, and we did it in a format where rather than giving a presentation to, a fixed presentation to a group, we developed a series of 10 stations similar to this board that I have up here that presented information about our recommendations, and then we also included with that a survey, and we asked people to fill out the survey. We had a total attendance of 85 people at this meeting, and we collected 51 surveys. So let's just look a little bit at the attendee survey profiles. So the number that wanted to construct at their current address, we had 22 respondents for that, 43 percent. For those who wanted to construct somewhere in the future, but maybe not where they currently live, we had 11 respondents, and then we had also had some people that were not interested in constructing, but were there just for information purposes only, and I just, I need to make a correction, that should be 18 rather than 17. Alright, so we started out with the group to kind of give them a little taste of where we are, where the community has been, what are accessory dwelling units. They were constructed in the city in the 20s, 30s, and 40s in response to housing shortages, and there are over 180 existing ADUs that we know of scattered throughout the older portions of the city. We then asked people, are they, were they aware of the existence of ADUs in the community? And I made, made to make a correction on this one, that should be yes equals 46, so 90 percent. Do you, we also asked them, do you know of any ADUs on your block? And that was pretty high, I thought, 29, 57 percent, and then we wanted to see, did anyone have any negative experiences with any neighboring ADU properties throughout their time in Inglewood, and unfortunately, there are some that have. So the scoring for the survey, it's on a 1 to 5 scale with 5 strongly agree down to 1 strongly disagree. And the maximum possible score, if you got 5, if someone scored 5 on all the different, if every respondent scored a 5 for a particular category, you could get a possible score of 255. So the way we scored this is we add up what the actual score was through the different numbers, and so in this case, an example of scoring 131 on a particular subject, taking a percentage of 255, that would be 51 percent approval rate. We never got any approval rates that were lower than 50 percent on any category that we presented, and we asked Planning and Zoning Commission to take us another look at anything that fell within 50 to 65 percent approval, just to reconsider potentially any changes they wanted to make. So we started out with the five purposes of ADUs, and this is very important to the Plan, certain Planning and Zoning Commission members, they felt that this was the groundwork that would be established, that they could start to hang the fruit of recommendations on, and sometimes they actually even changed their mind on some of these, really kind of pulled my hair out a little bit, but the, I, God bless them, they really did a good job on this, and the scores, I think, show that. We are proposing two different kinds of ADUs. The first is the garden cottage, which is more like the traditional ADUs that have been found in Inglewood in the past. It is a secondary, smaller house, standalone, single-family house in the back of the yard. The second type is the carriage house, and this is something that we recently had approved at the Logan Street condominiums, and these feature an accessory dwelling unit on top of a garage unit. And I just wanted to point out at the very bottom here of this slide, attached ADUs, whether it be in basements or additions, are not being recommended by P&amp;Z, and there's a few reasons for this. In R3 and R2 zone districts, you can really already do this. You can convert a basement in a single-family dwelling house into apartment as long as it meets code, and you can develop an addition for a second unit, and you can create duplexes in these zone districts. The district that we're more concerned about is the R1C zone district, and if we were to, wanting to allow ADUs in this zone district, we felt that we really wanted to raise the bar a bit, and we didn't really want a proliferation of basements or additions being developed in these neighborhoods. We wanted to keep the character more in line with what it is today, single-unit standalone homes, and what we're doing is just adding a second single standalone home in the back, and trying to keep that single-family character as much as possible. So what types of lots are eligible? One-unit detached dwelling standard lot with a 50-foot minimum width can either do one garden cottage or one carriage house unit. A one-unit detached dwelling small lot with a 37-foot minimum width is going to be allowed for a carriage house only, and the reason for that is that when you are trying to fit a two-stall garage and then a separate garden cottage on a pretty small lot, it gets pretty cramped, and we're trying to kind of stay away from that. We, we want to keep it more of an open feeling, and we don't think that, we think it's a better, more efficient plan to do a carriage house unit above the garage, and they have more open space that way. And then for urban lots, or with lots, there are less than 37-foot in width, townhome lots, duplex and multi-unit lots, these types of lots are not going to be eligible for accessory dwelling units. So how can you develop accessory dwelling units? This is, this diagram kind of shows you the different options. So at the very top lot right there, this, this would be example of constructing a new carriage house and driveway. The second version, option here, we've actually decided not to go ahead with. We presented this to the public, which was to convert existing garage to an accessory dwelling unit. However, we had a conversation with our chief building official, and their take on it was that so much work would have to be done to bring up a accessory structure that was originally built as a garage that would meet the code for a living unit, that it would make more sense, it would be just as expensive just to build, as to build new construction, and she felt that that would be the better option, and that we should just not go ahead with the conversion of garages, and so we have made that change. Planning and Zoning decided to make that change. And then the third option here is, so we have, in Inglewood, we have non-conforming homes that don't meet our normal setbacks, they were built way in the back of the lot, and so we thought that this would be an option that would be, we think that could be a win for the neighborhood, the city block, kind of by trying to create a more conforming, you know, frontage along a block, kind of filling in there, so we would allow somebody with, in this situation, to build a new primary structure out front, and then the existing structure would then become a garden cottage accessory dwelling unit. And finally, the last example is straightforward new garden cottage ADU construction down here at the bottom. Alright, so now we're at the accessory dwelling unit occupancy requirements, and so when we came to you October, I think of 2016, we kind of heard that that was kind of important to have owner occupancy requirements, maybe not so much in the R3 and R2, but certainly for R1. Planning and Zoning Commission decided to take that farther, and they decided that they felt that it should be owner occupancy in whatever zone district, and so that's where we're going. So the one thing I want to say before we go on is that when somebody comes to us to build an accessory dwelling unit and apply for it, the first thing that we will be doing is we will be requiring them to record a deed restriction with the Arapahoe County Clerk, saying that they understand that this, they, this, in order to have this accessory dwelling unit and rent it out, they're going to have to be an owner occupant of that property. And what that does is that when this property is sold, this, when they do the title search, that this deed restriction will come up, and people will, can't plead ignorance on that. So the owner of record with a, and this is something we decided to change based on a comment at the meeting, rather than 51 percent, which, when we started, when the guy explained it, probably no one really does 51, 49 percent ownership of a property, so we're going to change that to 50 percent, minimum ownership interest in the property must occupy either the principal dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit as their legal permanent address, as demonstrated by voter and vehicle registration. The owner shall verify on an annual basis that they continue to occupy as the, as their principal residence, and we do this for our existing accessory dwelling units today. We, every once a year, we mail out a notice that asks the owner to complete a card that says, yes, I'm still using this accessory dwelling unit, I'm still renting it out, and so we would send these cards out to our new accessory dwelling unit owners and say, and ask them to verify that, yes, I'm still living at this residence, it's still my primary residence. They must reside on the property for a minimum of nine months of the year, and the owner may not rent the owner's legal residence without applying to the city for a leave of absence. If owned by a corporation or similar entity, the property must be occupied by a person authorized to bind such entity in real estate matters. So what are the, what are the situations that where we would allow for leave of absence? They'd be temporary job assignments, military deployments, educational research sabbaticals, formal voluntary service for humanitarian organization, religious missionary service, and lend long-term hospital, nursing home, assisted living facility stays. The owners must resign the subject property for at least one year after construction before applying for a city leave of absence, and the owner may apply for a city-approved leave of absence for up to one year, and this could, a second year could be granted based on a clean record with no serious violations. And then for military personnel, they would be able to also apply for additional years beyond two years as long as they had a clean record. During the approved leave of absence, the owner may rent both the principal dwelling unit and accessory dwelling at the same time. This kind of gives you a layout of what, how the accessory dwelling unit would sit on the lot. So there's that line kind of in the two-thirds of the way, that's the 35 percent line. The accessory dwelling unit has to be located within that 35 percent area between the alley and then that black line, can't be any closer than that. This also shows you that, so here's where the water would come off the street, and the water would need to be connected to the main line to the accessory dwelling unit, and the same thing with the sewer line off the alley. There can't, there won't be allow, we won't be allowing separate lines for that, and that's because we don't want someone on a corner lot to try to sell that accessory dwelling unit separately. Then with the stairway, we've, we've put a provision that a stairway is not allowed on the side of the ADU that's closest to the single-family, the next-door neighbor, and the reason why is because we wanted to kind of protect their privacy a little bit, so they'll, you'll have to build a stairway on these other different sides here. And of course, we also, for every ADU, they must provide one parking space. Alright, and so here's more of the design dwelling unit parameters. An ADU shall not exceed 650 square feet of gross floor area. This was, some people wanted to do more than that, but our Planning and Zoning Commission felt that this is good for now, they were, they didn't want to budge there. As, as I said, the exterior stairs for access to an upper level shall not be located on the side of the accessory structure parallel to the nearest side lot line. Lot coverage for a garden cottage ADU shall be counted toward the maximum allowed lot coverage. ADU placement restricted to the 35 percent rear of the lot. ADU must conform with all existing accessory structure setbacks, a maximum bulk plane height of 12 feet will be established at side property lines. One off-street parking space shall be provided for each ADU, and ADU must connect to the principal dwelling unit water and sewer lines. Separate lines are not allowed. ADUs may not be subdivided or sold separately. So at this point, now we are at the subject of where these, where these accessory dwelling units should be allowed and what the Planning and Zoning recommends for that. So we have developed a map of the historical ADUs in the city, and they are typically clustered within a quarter mile of the Broadway corridor, and with a mile walking distance of downtown Inglewood, and are often found within the city's comprehensive plan limited transition areas. They are typically located in areas with alleyways, and relatively few are found in R1 and R1B zone districts, which came later in the 1950s. They are typically absent from the commercial zone districts as well, and so the recommended zone districts that we are, that the Planning and Zoning Commission has come up with are the MUR 3B, MUR 3A, R2B, R2A, and R1C zone district. And so this map here is a demonstration of that, so the purple dots on the map are the locations of existing historical accessory dwelling units within the city of Inglewood. And so you, as you can see, they are clustered typically, heavily clustered within the first-floor blocks on either side of Broadway, and typically closer to downtown. So these are the zone districts that we have come up with that match very closely that historical pattern. The brown zone districts are multifamily R3 and R2 zone districts. The orange, the orange areas that are, these are what were identified in the comprehensive plan as transition areas. They are R1C zoned areas, but they are, have been labeled as transitional areas, and then the yellow is the remaining areas that are zone R1C but are not in those transition zone districts. So this, it was very interesting to kind of analyze what, how people felt in their surveys about the zone districts. The respondents that were interested in constructing ADUs generally felt that, typically, they felt that ADU should be allowed in all residential zone districts, including R1B and R1A. Of the 22 respondents wishing to construct ADUs on properties they currently own, 14 of these properties are located within the R1C zone districts. That is where the most, the majority of the demand that we are seeing is in these R1C zone districts. The respondents that were not interested in constructing ADUs could be divided into a number of different groups, so there wasn't really a consistent outlook in terms of people who are not interested in constructing. We had five people say that they should be allowed in all residential zone districts, including R1A and R1B. We had one person agree with what we are recommending in having it just in R1C but not R1A and R1B, and we had four that thought that we should just have them in R3s and R2s only, and then we also had a group of about nine people who have unfavorable view of accessory dwelling units, who didn't really have any preference and really weren't in favor of them. So where we are today, we already have had a public hearing with Planning and Zoning Commission on the September 6th, and we are looking to try to move this quickly, if that is what council would like. We believe that, we've kind of looked at the schedule, and we believe that we could have a first reading on October 2nd with a public hearing with city council on October 16th, and then have a second reading, final vote on November 6th on a Monday. And at this time, I would like to encourage any questions and any discussion that council would like to have on this topic.
Thank you. Open up for questions and comments from council. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. So are we going to allow them in R1A?
We are not recommending that.
Okay, I would highly recommend that we reconsider that, because all the comments that I've received in R1A, especially down on the more southwest, there's a lot of big lots that could easily and more effectively do with this than some other lots, and not understanding why R1A, because we have a lot of folks that I've been meeting with lately who would love to have a carriage home or a convert, you know, have a garage conversion to bring their elderly parent or somebody else there. I don't understand why we would be restricting, you know, certain people. I, I think if you, you can get a certain percentage of your block to say it's okay, then it should be fine, but I just don't understand why we're giving some people privilege and some people not. Thank you.
I'm sorry, just for clarity, we're saying that the recommendation from P&amp;Z is to not allow an R1A?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. You're saying allow it in R1A, thank you. Councilmember Russell?
You may have covered this at the beginning, but when did the ADU discussion reappear on the table? I mean, we did it years ago, and then when did it come back to the surface?
We began, we picked it back up off the table in the fall of 2016, and the reason why it was tabled was we were kind of in the middle of Inglewood Forward and all of those different plans, and we, we felt that the comprehensive plan needed to be approved first, because there, it is mentioned, accessory dwelling units are mentioned in that plan, so we felt it would be better to hold off until that comp plan was approved. We also lost our key staff member who was involved with the ADUs at that time, so we kind of had to reboot the whole process, and so once the comp plan was done, then we began to start thinking about accessory dwelling units again.
So is that the first time it came up was when the comp plan was being addressed, or did it come up before the comp plan?
The way I recommend, recollect it, it was probably fairly, it may have come just before the comp plan kicked off.
Okay, and that was in 2016, 2015?
2015.
Okay, and then, so who requested the study, or requested that we start looking back into that?
I don't think we, it necessarily was that anyone necessarily, well, probably Planning and Zoning Commission probably was interested, because they had done so much work on it, that they probably did want to come back and revisit it and complete the project.
Okay, and so when did the ADUs on the Logan Street properties, when did that get approved?
Harold says he believes it's been two or three years.
And how did they get approved if we haven't, if we don't have?
It was planned unit development rezoning.
Okay, I think those are all the questions that I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you for this, and I appreciate Kate Townley suggesting that there be an open meeting for this. Unfortunately, there weren't very many people there considering how vast the impact could be of this decision, so I don't know if that was talked about there, what, how many? You have 33 responding positively, 20 some negatively, so 50 some. How many filled out the forms?
We had 51 surveys collected.
Yeah. I, I actually, I'm, I'm, I don't know what to think about this, because the only thing I've, I've heard opposite of you, I've had three people call me only on this, all of them really negative, and, and they felt like that when they came to the meeting, because it was here, right, and you rotated around to all the possibilities, they thought it was a done deal, so some of them just misunderstood the evening, because there wasn't any introduction to the whole thing, and they came and went, so I think some of them were really confused by it, and I was trying to explain, and then I thought, oh my goodness, I'm probably making this worse, but I would love to see more done on this, because it seems like people who did come were those who are highly aware of either wanting to do it or wanting to make sure they don't want it, and then there's a lot of people that are just sort of unaware. So I can't remember, I remember we had a flyer on it. How did we get the word out on this? Although it's not a bad show for these kinds of things, I also, because we often get very few people at these.
We deliberately scheduled this accessory dwelling unit open house meeting so that we could advertise it in the new Inglewood Citizen Magazine, so we did advertise it in that magazine.
Did you ask them how they heard about it on your survey? I can't remember.
I don't believe so.
I don't remember seeing that yet. Probably good to find out. Oh, hello. In my classes, if your phone gets off, you get to answer it. I get to answer it. Which means mine too. I would love to see more people asked about this before we go to a public hearing. I don't know, I just would like some more input, but I'm, I'm glad at the direction in terms of trying to get all of this. I'm a little surprised at how split it is. It seems more split than one-sided to me. I don't know, maybe I'm just reading it from the people that called me.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. I have two questions. How did we arrive at the 650 square feet number?
I think that was, they kind of looked at what a garage, the size of a garage typically would be. You know, so you're, a typical two-stall garage that might have some extra room for storage, might come to, close to be about 600, 650 square feet. So, that was kind of part of the calculation there as well. I think they were, they're hoping, they're kind of, I think they wanted it to be kind of like a one-bedroom type of deal. So, typically, a fairly good-sized, one-bedroom unit will typically be in about 650 square feet.
Okay. I was curious, I used to live in one, and it was about 500 square feet, and it was perfect for one person. It was one-bedroom, had everything it needed. So, just curious about how the 650 feet was arrived at. And then, do we any know how many of the current ADUs are owner-occupied? Do we have any idea what that number may be?
I do not have that information.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I had a couple of comments. I just wanted to thank staff for their efforts in gathering some feedback from residents on this issue. I loved how this one was put together with statistics that kind of gave us more of an objective standard that we could kind of calculate, rather than just sort of subjective anecdotal kind of feedback. So, I really appreciated the effort that you went through to kind of count how many people were in each category. I think that helped a lot. Real quick, just to make sure I understand the frontage eligibility that you guys were describing, I think there was a slide that described 50 feet and 37 feet. Basically, you're saying the main lot needs to be 50 feet of frontage in order to be able to have an ADU. Is that correct?
Let me go back to that slide. So, your typical 50-foot minimum width lot can either do, they have their choice. They can do a garden cottage, or they can do a carriage house above a garage. So, they have a couple of options there.
The 37 can only do?
The carriage house.
Okay. The carriage is the detached, right? Sorry.
That's above the garage.
Yeah, okay, they can only do above the garage. Okay, thank you. You know, I think the, you know, discussion seemed to kind of mostly center around R1 Zone Districts, you know. It seems to me that, you know, R2 and R3, all those Zone Districts are probably not having an issue with this, because most of what we're describing here is at least conceptually somewhat allowed, as far as, you know, being able to have another unit on your average, or even, you know, smaller than average size lot. So, maybe one way we can get feedback on this is to either decide to push this forward for all Zone Districts, or to potentially pull R1 and just let it go to R2 and R3. In my mind, the allowing even in R2 and R3 would be a slight change in policy. Is that fair to sort of outline exactly what's possible and give guidance to folks on these type of things? Can you give me some comments perhaps on what's allowed currently in R2 versus, you know, allowing this in R2?
So, today in R2, if you want to do a second unit, it actually has to be attached, either in the back, or on the side, or in a basement. You can't do separate structures today. So, that would, it would be a change. And we have heard from some of our citizens that are very preservation-minded, that are not, you know, not really very happy seeing single-family homes scraped for two-town, two-town home units. They have, they feel that this could be a way to give people another option, where they could preserve the house that's in front, the historical house, and then give them that option to build another unit in the rear, so that we have heard that.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful to understand the detached versus the attached in R2. You know, I appreciated the discussions and thoughts behind kind of owner-occupied and sort of this deed restriction. What would happen, I guess, if somebody violated that, right? They said, you know, I'm not honoring that. What would the city's enforcement mechanism be? Would we have like a cease and desist, or would we have like a, something that would condemn that property? How would that work? Do we know?
Well, I think I would defer to our city attorney on that.
Any thoughts on that?
Typically, how we'd respond to that would be issuing a citation, step one, and bringing the matter into municipal court. It's a code violation. And if we can't get it dealt with quickly through the municipal court as a code violation, we would also have the ability to go into civil court and take whatever kind of civil actions is necessary to stop the violation. And that's the standard response to any violation of the city's code.
And does the renting action trigger that? You know, I guess I'm concerned that some folks might argue that I'm not renting this, and that that's my family member, or my cousin, or whatever that might be, and I worry about some enforcement mechanism here on some of this. Any thoughts on that?
I don't, it depends on how we actually set up the code, but the response is that typically, the property owner is the party that we would take action against. The renter can sometimes be, depending upon the way we form the code, can be put on notice that they're acting a violation. It's just the way we decide to form that.
Thank you. I think there's probably some details there we need to flush out. I guess, you know, my thought is, I'm just kind of pointing out that maybe it might be, you know, some instances like that might be sort of difficult to deal with. And so, how we want to sort of couch that might be interesting. You know, I'm of the thought of, you know, bringing the recommendation from P&amp;Z forward to a regular meeting and doing a public hearing, again, from the council perspective, to gather feedback on that. You know, again, my thought is kind of maybe this dividing line is kind of some of the R1 areas. I could see potentially us taking R1s off the table if we got to that consensus, but let's get some more discussion on this.
Like Councilmember Olson, I got only five emails on this, but I got some private messaging from requests that I just put out on Nextdoor. I just said, hey, this is going on. I didn't opine on it, I just gave a link to the information so that they could look at it. Three of them were against it, and two of them were for it. The two that were for it were not in District 3, but the three that were against it happened to be. And one of the issues that came up the most, I think, was the compliance. And I'll bring up the other issues as well. One particular email kind of hit the vast majority of them that people brought up. But the compliance and what was brought up is we are unable to meet compliance for no more than two unrelated people living in a house. We are unable to get, wrap our compliance and our code issues around weeds. And how are we going to prove where somebody is living and who is living there, any more than we can prove whether people are related in the household or not? We keep kind of putting ourselves in positions where we have really unenforceable, it's unenforceable. And if it's unenforceable, then I guess the intention or the impression it gives is that we never really intended it to be followed. And so, that's a huge problem. I don't know how in the world you're going to prove that. And if we can, if we do find a way to do that, how are we going to, where's the money going to come from to do this kind of compliance check? So, I mean, I'm not even sure that we're in the ballpark of figuring that piece of it out, and I think we're pushing this a little too fast. Some of the issues that got brought up were, obviously, the concern about some affordability, that once we start putting these other homes on there, that you kind of take the home with accessory dwelling unit maybe out of the reach of some lower-income people. I think that's worth at least considering. And that because of that, with the intent of solving the housing problem, in her words, is double-speak for accommodating developers, and that more than likely, most of these might be done when a developer comes in and scrapes off a house, to go ahead and be able to have both of them on there. The, a huge issue for people that I talked to at my town hall as well was that the, it changes the character. The vast majority of District 3 is R1, it's single-family homes, and the character of that community, they believe, gets changed. They're concerned with the density and the infrastructure, and that this is just increasing density where it really doesn't belong and was never engineered to be when they originally zoned that area. And this should be really taken very seriously. The environmental impacts on the infrastructure, sewer water and the storm drainage as well. Another question was the alleys are narrow, and they're concerned about safety issues on access. I just went with a couple of people this last weekend, and we have, we have problems with keeping up the code issues in the alley, so that they are passable already. So, I do agree that there are some concerns, that if you have it in that back section there, how are we going to do proper fire if we need to get in that back area, if that's the only access that we have, especially with a lot of them that they don't, you don't have access to that accessory dwelling unit from the front. So, if you have to go back because there is a fire, or some rescue issue, that you have to go back and do that. And it just didn't look like it got taken into consideration with that, with the planning of this. But a couple of people thought of it. And then, the proposed, the parking issues, because the regulations are requiring that they have one on-street parking space, I guess, in there. I think that's, I think that's accurate.
For off-street?
But nonetheless, I think that there's some concern about increasing the parking along the street, where we're already having problems. I mean, especially in my area, you're seeing a lot more people, if there's a rental home, where they're having to get additional roommates just to be able to afford the rent. And so, people are seeing their streets fill up more with cars. They're not willing to turn their neighbor in or take DNA tests of their neighbor, because they got a third roommate or a fourth roommate in order to afford things. But they are realizing the impact of that kind of increased density on their neighborhood and the, and the character and culture that they've bought into is, and it makes it go away. And so, I really, I would agree with Councilmember Olson, that I would really like to see this studied a little bit more and get a few more answers to some of these. I greatly appreciate all the people that responded to me or discussed this with me. I wish it was more as well, and I think that we can reach out for that. I do think that a lot of people, because they keep hearing this in the, you know, state of the city, or when your mayor talks, or when somebody's going, this is what we're looking at, but they've gotten the impression that it already went through. And there were some people that were already, you know, like we had at the last council meeting, where somebody's already put some tiny house on their property, as if, they can't do that. So, they're not even in an area where they're allowed to. So, I think that there's been some impression, given that this is already something that we've done deal. So, maybe if we could reach out a little bit more, and certainly, I'd like some answers to these questions, if you don't mind the next. And that's all I had.
Thank you. Just clarity on the on-street versus off-street requirement. What is the parking requirement for an ADU that's being proposed?
One on-street parking spot, or off-street, one off-street parking spot.
Thank you. So, not on the street, just, you know, on the property.
And then, it's enforcement issue on that, too.
Fair enough, fair enough. But at least on the design piece. Councilmember Yates?
This is a question about R1A down there on the southwest side versus on the northeast side. Are the lot sizes, in my head, they kind of seem to be a lot bigger down there in that southwest area. But are the lot sizes considerably different between the two areas?
I would kind of echo what you said, that I think there are, there's are some lots down in the southwest part that are really, really big, especially like on Mariposa. But R1A, they are larger lots than R1C in the northeast part as well, too. So, there, there may be a slight difference, but not a big difference.
I have to admit that folks who have talked to me about it from R1A, now granted, most of them are in the northeast area of this town, have been not in favor. Most of the people I've talked to, other than that, they have been favorable towards this. So, I mean, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I would concur with you there, Councilmember Yates. It seems like, I mean, just recently is when I got the three, it was after the meeting that you held. And I was really glad that you had it. So, I think we went in the right direction on that. And I don't think 50 people is that bad for these things either. So, I don't want you to hear that I didn't think you did a good enough job. I just wish there'd be a lot more. And if people got direct letters or something and know that this isn't a done deal, they might then realize, you know, I want to come to this. But there are, there are a lot that already have them. And so, as your statistics showed, a lot of people were aware of them more than we might know. When I've talked to some neighbors about it, who seem somewhat ambivalent about it as well, they didn't even know that some of the areas that they've been in have them. And so, I don't know if people know what it is. I don't know if that happened that night. Did people know what an ADU is? I mean, one of the women that called me had no, really still did not know what it really was. And she was very concerned, because her lot is really small, and she's afraid that a lot of lots like hers will just be so crowded with things. But you've written this up, so that probably isn't possible, because you have to have a big enough square footage. I mean, 650 is more than 500, which does make a difference. And it almost makes more sense to put them in the bigger lot areas than it is the smaller ones. But, and I hate telling people what to do with their property. I just want them to know what's going on more. And so, I'd hate to rush this for that reason. I'd love to get a lot more input. But this is one, I wish we had that electronic town hall format, where we could buzz things out to people and get some response, and, I mean, just to get a little bit more input. Did you do an R1A, C, did people choose when they came that night as well? What kind of a district they were in, what kind of a zoning area they were in? So, we got some read as to whether they were coming from areas that would be most likely to allow this, given what you were?
I did, I did look at that, what their address, so in my survey, they listed what their address was. And so, I did, I did do some calculations on that. So, like, the 22 that wanted to build ADUs, 14 of them, their properties were in the R1C.
Were in the R1C.
So, that was where the most demand was coming from. But also, yes, I also looked at the people who also were dissent, or were not in favor of ADUs and were worried about them. And that, that is where it's usually, it was in your area in the northeast part of the city.
I think that would be the common thing I would hear.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Just one final comment. In R1A, you're allowed to put a big old garage. I just had a neighbor that the city allowed to put this big workhouse in his backyard. That's not a problem. It just doesn't make sense. You know, we have third-acre lots where I'm at, plenty of room to make it still look nice in the back. It's just, I think someone needs to rethink this. And these are the people who, you know, have aging parents, who don't want to have to pay for home care, and you want to bring them closer, and some of them want to, you know.
Well, the one thing that just popped in my head is that, so, some of our Planning and Zoning Commission members, not all of them agreed with this proposal, and some of them thought that they should be allowed in R1A and R1B as well. We kind of said, well, you know, what, we kind of convinced them to go along in the fact that we, we thought that this would be kind of an experiment to start out with, and that if it was really successful, and we started getting more and more people that were in R1A and R1B, that were, that showed us that they were interested in doing that, then we could revisit it and expand it into those areas.
Can I tell you what happens? When an R1, R1A or R1B comes to you, you're going to say, no, they're not allowed. You know, unless you, so you could wait years to have people come up enough to say, so, you know, they're having to wait for years instead of giving the opportunity. I think it should be a neighborhood idea. If your neighbors say, hey, we got the lots for it, and we want it as a neighborhood, that's one thing. But to make a blanket saying no R1, or R1A, or R1B, and just to be clear, I'm not looking to put one at my house. So, I don't want my kids to move in, so, and my, I don't have parents, so.
The other thing that I, that popped in my mind was that what we could, we could probably speed that up a little bit, if you'd like. We could go ahead with this proposal and get it done, and then we would make it a priority to have a phase two of this process. And we would have a direct outreach to R1A and R1B parts of the city. We could do that.
Thank you. You know, I think I'm kind of hearing that, you know, we probably need some further discussion, particularly as it applies to R1. I think this idea of perhaps a sort of phased approach might be a reasonable one. Perhaps what I want to try to gain a sort of phased approach might be a reasonable one. Perhaps what I want to try to gain consensus on perhaps is R2 and all R2 and R3 zone districts. I think there's lots of benefits to moving that process forward, perhaps separately from the R1. You know, we've talked about a few of those of maintaining the characters of the neighborhoods and the R2s and 3s rather than scraping and building the attached product. We talked about, I think, of helping affordable housing by adding supply and helping the sort of aging-in-place issue. And so I'm seeing, I don't think, a lot of resistance in R2 and R3s. Maybe this could be separated out and we could take a little bit more in-depth look at the R1. Maybe we can get some feedback on that as other people begin to comment again. Councilmember Berentone?
I agree.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I agree.
Thank you.
And I agree, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
We're agreeing to going ahead with this as-is.
No, with R2 and R3 by, we're going to remove from the recommendation R1C.
Is it okay? I'm just asking for clarification. Is there something wrong?
No, that's, that's just exactly what he just explained. But if you need it explained again, that's fine.
I, I want to make absolute sure I know.
Absolutely. You should absolutely always know what you're voting on.
I can see the Florida.
Thank you. And I'm glad that you're asking that.
Pardon?
I'm glad that you're asking that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. A little, little laughter over there made me a little nervous. So I, I just want to make sure that we're not sending a message that's going to be a little bit broader. So I'm asking you to repeat. What exactly? It's R2 and R3 that we're talking about.
Only, yes. And I, where we're.
Actually, two out of the three phone calls I got were from people in those areas. The other one was from an R1A. So that's why I'm hesitant about it. And I, I'm a little bit nervous about rushing through this tonight yet. So if there's somebody else who wants to give you a consensus, go for it.
I appreciate it. Anybody else want to weigh in on this?
Actually, can I?
Yeah, I'll come back to you. Councilmember Russell, then I'll go to Councilmember Yates.
I actually agree with Councilmember Olson. So I didn't realize what I was agreeing to.
Okay.
That we shouldn't go so fast.
You didn't get a second.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Yates?
Well, I know there's been a lot of discussion from the community for, well, the whole time I've been on council about this issue. R1, 3, excuse me, not R1, 3, zones 2 and 3, frankly, I don't see issues with that. R1C, I know that on my block, if that would have been an option, there would have probably been a couple of houses that would not have been scraped if that would have been an option. But instead, the people decided, "Hey, I can't, I, I can't live here anymore because the house is too small. They sold it. The house got scraped and boom." Where something like this would have changed that out for them.
Thank you. Others want to weigh in on, you know, how to move this forward if we don't move forward with the R2? Well, I guess regardless how we deal with the R1 issue might get some feedback. Are we looking for, you know, further staff meetings, public meetings? Are we looking to table this for some period of time? Do others want to weigh in on this, on where they're at? Councilmember Martinez?
I would like to see a little more public input on this, only because I agree with Councilmember Olson. I think people feel like it already is a thing that we're going to do. And so I think we should get more input, maybe specific to the zones that are outside maybe the recommendations. So I would like to see a little more input. And I agree, 83 people or so is, is a lot for one event, but it's not a lot in comparison to our whole community. So I would just like to see maybe another public meeting or maybe just more information collected from folks before we decide how to move forward.
Thank you.
That's fine.
You know, I'm hearing some consensus kind of gathering on that. If Member Yates is supportive of that. Staff, do you need further direction on how to handle this? You know, I feel like it's kind of running back the same meeting, perhaps with a different, you know, focus on some of the R1 issues that were brought forward. Perhaps others could weigh in.
Have you given consensus?
What's that?
I actually think Amy gave you consensus on this.
On having a public meeting? Yep. And so I'm just asking staff if they need any additional feedback from us on what those should look like and, you know, where maybe some focus should be. Councilmember Olson?
What?
Are we going to?
I'm confused.
Yeah, I'm hearing, Member Yates, I guess I was hearing from you that you didn't want to proceed with 2 and 3. That's what Member Martinez expressed, I think. It was saying, "Hey, let's, let's hold off a little bit and let's reevaluate all of these zone districts at the same time and have further public meeting discourse." And so Councilmember Yates may be clarify where you're at, and then I'll go to Councilmember Olson.
I said 2 and 3. I'd be fine with that. I think that's, you know, but, you know, since R1C seems to be a good portion of our city, we probably should take a little extra time and talk about it because potentially it might change the flavor of those areas. But...
Thank you. I think, you know, again, Councilmember Yates and I are recommending that we move forward with R2 and R3 at this time and having that session be R1. Mayor Protem is jumping on board there, so perhaps we can get a fourth. If not, my thought is the four, the other four, perhaps we can get some consensus on what these meetings should look like or where the focus should be. Councilmember Olson?
Let's do one, one issue at a time here.
Yeah, we've got about six minutes here. I apologize. I'm trying to move this forward.
I heard that you had consensus because, because Councilmember Berentone said yes.
That was until Amy clarified that she was actually agreeing with what Councilmember Yates said he didn't say.
Okay.
Councilmember Olson, why don't you just clarify where you're at?
I don't know if you got any of this, but anyway. It's a little confusing. So my, my, I don't want to hold this up for a long time. I think the zoning's been working and planning and zoning's been working on it for a while. It's unfortunate that we're moving into this changeover of leadership. That doesn't help either. But I would love to have some kind of a public meeting where there is a sit-down together first, explain it all to everyone, do a little bit of definitions of some of the, of the things so that they're not kind of hit-missing around interpreting things on their own. Because one of the calls I got was concerning because they really did think this was done and over with and we were just informing them. And I don't want people to, I mean, people are going to always be, "I didn't understand what you were asking earlier and I, and you all heard what you heard." So I, I, that would be my goal, would be to make sure that we have maybe a sit-down meeting, then they get up and walk around and give input into the different kinds of things you put together, which I hope you still have. I don't know if that helps or not. And you may not get more than 80. The other question would be how to get it, how to get word out to people. The magazine maybe isn't the way everybody's reading things right now yet. I don't know if there's another format. Man, it'd be great if we had everybody an email with this.
But again, you're supporting not moving R2, R3 forward at this time.
Right, right. But I'm fine if you've got four to move forward. Go for it.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone?
I'm going to agree with Councilmember Martinez and Olson that, I guess, the whole process, we need a little bit more information. And if we could do a public hearing on, on all of it, or get more information and put some more information out. Because I think that she is correct, that maybe all of the areas didn't get as much as opportunity for input. And I believe that you said you only had 50 surveys. And, and I don't know how many of the other people in attendance were staff or, or other interested developers or whatever, but I'm just going to go by the people that put the surveys in. And I think I would like some more information. So I'm going to agree with that.
Thank you. I guess my concern is this is going to look very similar to the meeting we already have, a kind of a runback of this. Do we get some feedback adequate enough, I think, for staff to move this, feel comfortable moving this forward? Councilmember Russell, perhaps more feedback on that?
Could we also look at the enforcement piece? Because I think that if we can't enforce it, I don't think it's a good idea.
Councilmember Olson?
One more. Sorry, I'd forgotten this. I would love to see some comparison communities, not just in the metro area, but others around the country that maybe have gone through this that are similar first-tier cities to a metro area, to see what some of the best practices are and what people have learned from unintended consequences, what, you know, four or five years down the line, if there's a way we can get that kind of stuff. I know that the innovation site sometimes does that kind of stuff, but I know that's a lot more work.
I guess it keeps us employed.
Well, good.
Great. We'll pick this issue up sometime soon. Any final comments from anybody as we conclude this up? Sounds like we will be having another round of public meetings and picking this issue back up from there. We'll go ahead and adjourn this study session and pick up our regular session in a few minutes next door.